You gotta give them twenty seconds.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular session meeting in the County Board of Education. Please join me for amendment of silence. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we do not have special recognition, but we do have public participation this evening?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson Baker, will you, uh...
Gonna...
Yeah, let's... Hi there.
Come on in and right up to the podium. Good night, good evening.
Hi, Ms. Henderson Baker is gonna read our public, uh, rules for public participation.
Okay, Madam Chair, public participation is the time that the board has set aside to encourage you as members of our community to voice your opinion on any matter either included on or excluded from the printed agenda. A maximum time of five minutes will be allotted to a single individual or a single topic based on the number of requests. Complaints against any employee of the school system will not be heard unless the complaint has been submitted in writing to the superintendent at least seven days prior to the board meeting. If unresolved, any personal complaints about school personnel must be put in writing for the board to review an executive session. Personal attacks against any member of the board will not be tolerated. Once the time for public participation has passed, discussion of topics will be restricted to board members only. Thank you in advance for complying with this request. Madam Chair, tonight for public participation, we have Ms. Deborah Johnson.
Ms. Johnson.
Hello.
You can go ahead.
Go ahead. So I didn't plan this, so I'm gonna do my best with it. First, I wanna remind you of the mission to provide excellent education for all students and your vision. All students will be well-rounded and prepared for the future. I'm here to ask, and I have in bold demand accountability and intentionality for this. It is my sons and my experience in the school system, only a couple months in, that there is classroom management, FAP, PBIS deficiency, gross deficiency that needs to be addressed. I'm concerned with PSA T being canceled from a ninth grader, autistic ninth grader, who set his mind on doing it and then just got a message two days before, you're not doing it. No consideration to my child. Um, I have a child who is failing in school, and when I speak to the administration, Ms. Johnson, the students do this and then they pass at the end of the year. That's not preparedness and excellence. And, um... That, that's basically it. I just, I need PBIS, classroom management, and FAP to be really considered for all students as, as in the mission and the vision. It's, it's lacking, and I'm concerned for my son and all students.
I appreciate you coming tonight, and we will have the superintendent in her office will get in touch with you and work out the details of this.
Thank you.
And give more details about it.
We'll follow up again.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, moving on, we need approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Trey Bailey and the second was by Ms. Henderson Baker. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Superintendent's, uh, excuse me, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? First, a motion was made by Mr. Anderson Bailey and second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Moving on now to the superintendent's reports.
Madam Chair, items A through C are unchanged. However, in item D under superintendent's reports, we do have a presentation tonight for you, which will be led by Mr. Benjamin Roundtree, Chief Academic Officer for Newton County School System.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and have the presentation, and then we'll take the vote on the...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Fury, did you?
Sure, sure, sorry, I was just taking, taking notes. So as we're gearing up for Mr. Roundtree's presentation, just a, um, a quick footnote that we are gearing up for the fiscal year twenty-two or the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And in doing so, we are looking at our instructional options. And at this stage, we have decided that we will offer in-person instruction and a virtual, Mr. Johnson? Sorry, and a, and a virtual, pardon me, a virtual option. Mr. Roundtree will, will be speaking about our virtual option, um, this evening so that we can, um, share additional information. We, we've pretty much been offering virtual options all school year long. And one of the things that we've heard from our, from our teachers pretty loudly and clearly is that the school-based virtual model, which is where the children are in person, and then there are some children who are, um, who are not in person, they are being served virtually, that, that is not their model of preference and that it has created a hardship for them. So that is not an option that we are bringing forward for the next school year. However, as I said in an email to all of our staff members on Friday, given the unknown, we don't know what's going to happen in the coming school year. We have, we, we hope that, um, we have seen the worst of the impact of COVID- nineteen in our community and of course on our school system. But in the event that children are impacted and have to quarantine or teachers themselves are, we'll have to vacillate back and forth intermittently, but not as a model of choice. And so, um, that information, we listen to our teachers, um, and we are doing our best to provide options for our families as well. Um, it is definitely my hope that we, we will not have the same sorts of impacts as we had this school year because it has been a really challenging year for, for our families, for our community, and especially for, for our students. It is important to note, however, that, um, we also must have contingency plans in place. And I will be sharing with the community, um, in the event that we have to transition into another model, um, we will have a, an interim, so we won't go from one hundred percent in-person to one hundred percent virtual. We'll sort of scale it so that we decrease classroom density first and then watch the community impact. And then if we have to have, um, into a, into a virtual model, then that decision will be made after we implement what we call an A-B model, where students who are identified as, for example, their last names are A through L. They would come on Monday, Tuesday, and then M through Z would come on Thursday and Friday, and they would alternate Wednesdays. And we'll send out a schedule, so parents, if you're listening, don't stress. We'll send out everything ahead of time so that you'll have very clear instructions so that in the event we have, uh, an increase in community transmission, after consultation with the Health Department and our Piedmont Hospital staff, if that kind of decision has to be made, we'll make it in concert with them, and then we'll rotate into a, um, an A-B model prior to going to a completely virtual model. And so, in that model, you'll have students who are the As, and when they're in the A section, so they'll, they'll go Monday, Tuesday, and say this Wednesday they have class. On Thursday and Friday, they won't be required to log in virtually. They'll be working on the assignments that were provided in the, those A days, and then vice versa for the Bs. How, again, that's not a model. That is, in the event that we have a increase in community transmission, um, next school year, before we go to a hundred percent virtual, we wanted to have something in the middle so that we didn't have to lead directly in there. Mr. Roundtree, this evening will speak about, uh, virtual option, but Mr. Bailey, I saw you wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, I, I don't think I understood until just then that you're talking about next school, next school season.
Next school year.
Okay, so the agenda, just, I thought we were about to get a presentation about the current school year, so I think everything you just said, I thought you were talking about like this, it's about to happen.
No, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that's next.
Okay, I need to move aside.
It says the wrong date.
Yeah.
Well, we need to fix the agenda, it's supposed to be twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, now...
Got it.
Now I'm gonna try to, everything you just said for...
It is for fiscal year twenty-two, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So let me make sure, we'll clean that up on the agenda. I didn't notice that it had twenty-twenty-one on the agenda. But we will, what Mr. Roundtree is speaking about is, begins on August second, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, so the context has been set, and, and our job in student achievement specification is to take the options and then build the models that relate to those particular options. So this is what the presentation is about, the options for next school year. Uh, we begin with our vision, which say, 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 students will be well-rounded, prepared for the future. Our mission to provide educational support for all. Ms. Fury has already explained to us what our options will be, just to reiterate, that we will have an in-person option, open to students in pre-k, kindergarten, through twelfth grade, and they will have a virtual program for students who are in third grade through twelve. So please keep in mind that does not include pre-k, kindergarten, first or second grade. Just, I've, I've put this in here, the team worked on this, because we are committed to, um, I'm sorry.
Can we have a, have a...
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, but, but you need, you need to go back over something, or... To wait, wait.
Wait, wait, wait a minute.
See, I'm not the only one.
Let's, let's straighten up.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, all right, so this is our vision and our mission. All students will be well-rounded, prepared for the future. The mission is to provide educational support for all. This one, this particular slide game, just restate, um, what has already been stated, and that, that we will have two instructional options. One will be in-person, that is open to students in pre-k, kindergarten, twelfth grade, and then the virtual program, our third, third grade, twelfth, twelfth grade. And as I said earlier, pre-k, kindergarten, first and second grade, um, we did not include here. This particular slide just shows that we are still committed to long-range planning and relates to building the model. Um, the, for this next school year, of course, that's what it's on. But as you can see here, um, this work will be expanded as we go through the next few years. And what this shows will be the various pieces of this, the teams are divided up there, and these are the areas that they will be focused on. And as you'll see on the far right, we have a wide array of district personnel serving on these various committees. So our goal, of course, as, as many have said this year, is for students to return in person. Um, we, we see challenges with the, with students learning virtually. Um, obviously, you know, we have two options there, so our goal over arching this series to be, you know, in person with a teacher. However, we understand that, you know, some families still want the option of being virtual. Um, and so one, a big piece of this, however, that we want to implement for this next year is an advisory system, uh, because we want parents and the kids to talk with school staff about these particular options, because we want to make sure that children are in the model that whatever they're in, that they're going to be well-served in that. And, um, there, there, some students just have struggles, you know, in, um, in the virtual environment. I've had principals to say that they even wanted to say so in, uh, which, you know, which children would go virtual. Say, for example, if I am a student and, um, the school staff may have concerns about my success there, so they want to be able to talk with families, to kind of counsel them through this. Of course, we can't make the decision for families, but I do think that there is credence in, you know, getting some support and assistance, asking questions, you know, at the school level. So if you still decide that you want to continue or start in the virtual program, these are just some characteristics of things that would make a, 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 a good virtual learner. And is that he or she is independent, he or she is organized, he or she has good reading and comprehension skills, he or she has excellent time management skills, and that he or she is disciplined. And this isn't necessarily good behavior, of course, that is part of that. But discipline is much as being able to, again, you know, work independent and stay committed to it. And so with that comes some family commitment and support. And the reason that I'm spending, the bulk of the time on the virtual learning program is because we know what in-person is, that's how we traditionally do school. So I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to sway people one way or the other. It's just that we recognize that people understand what in-person learning is. But if, um, what we ask for my family, if your child is going to be a virtual learner, is that it become a semester-long commitment, that you have reliable internet service, that you attend quarterly conferences. Continue, continue. Um, we, we ensure that students attend any scheduled live sessions and meet weekly attendance requirements. That help us by also being a learning coach, and that they supervise and monitor the progress of the students as well. So what will the virtual program look like? It's, uh, we have, we have elementary, elementary, seventh grade, of course, you see the great span for the target audience. There will be some permanent staff that we are already budgeting for. There will be a program leader, uh, we've not decided on what we're going to call that position yet. So right now, that's just our placeholder. We will employ and register slash administrative assistant to assist with scheduling and do the other tasks that come with, um, you know, running a program. Uh, we use the word success coach here, but this program will also have a counselor. Um, and we are devoting a technology specialist solely for this program so that then there are technical issues and things of that nature that somebody devoted solely to this particular program. It won't be, you know, spread out across history. And then of course are faculty teachers. The curriculum for elementary school students will be teaching modules following district curriculum maps and facing. And for secondary, I'm packing curriculum with access to a certified teacher. We put in, we put in there, there, I'm a learning coach. Technology, we, the district will, 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 um, provide devices to all the students. But families must have reliable internet access, but that has to be provided by the household. For elementary school students, um, the great span, the grades three to five, they will have enrollment. It will be self-paced with teacher support. Teacher office, our one-on-one support, we will offer those four content areas, LA, math, science, social studies. And then of course, connection to E music and art, we'll use these canvas to add success lessons, and they're dedicated technology support.
Matty, Matty, you want, you want to test with Rob, Rob, will you?
I have two more slides.
Okay, okay.
And then for our secondary students, uh, of course, the great span is of grade sixteen, twelve. Uh, enrollment, LA, math, science, social studies, and you know, those get specific. You know, as you move up, you know, the latter high schools, and then select activities. There are, will be a packed curriculum, courses offered, limited edgenuity offerings. There is no outside curriculum. Teacher office hours, small, small group tutoring, use the edgenuity and canvas platforms to access curriculum and support, and then dedicated technology support. Keep in mind how every course is special programs that will not be offered, be STEM, Alanas, Ban, Chorus, and then we will have a limited amount of CTAE. And then this is, this is our registration process. Um, here's the calendar, we will have the online application process. Um, we hope to open the portal on April nineteenth and let it run through the, the end of April. Um, the student must be enrolled in the school of his or her attendance area. And if they're new to Newton, of course, they will complete a registration packet for the district. Um, we, our plan is to notify, um, parents of the acceptance on May fourteenth. Um, and then we will have orientation and onboarding for students and families. They, um, the window for them that's listed there, they, during that time, will pick up devices and their instructional materials, and then they'll become familiar with online courses and expectations. And then we have virtual open houses scheduled there according to the grade span. So that is a fifty thousand-foot, um, view of, of where we're headed, um, at this point, uh, you know, in the, in the, in the planning process. And, um, that's what we are, we, the point that we've gotten to now. So I will now open up the floor for question and comments. I'm gonna bring the, um, curriculum directors in, um, so that they can help fill some of the questions, and then I'm going to be scribing too, just in case, um, there are some things that, that we need to go back and, and review or look at based on your questions and comments.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Quick, just for, I, I was getting some text messages that there was, um, a lag, and, um, they, they could not understand what you were saying online on YouTube.
Okay.
Um, during this, and so I think Ms. Fury said we would repost it.
Yeah, it's recorded, that's what I was asking Dr. File, it's being recorded correctly, so we'll post it so that it will, people will be able to hear.
Okay, so I apologize to the people watching right now if you could not understand what was being said.
Okay, is it because of the mask, or you don't know, or it could be technology?
Just say it all again, just do it all again.
Well, I, I have a feeling I'll probably have to re-tape it. You can send it out, um, you know, again, so I have to, I have to...
Yeah, but it is recorded, so...
Okay.
All right, so, um, go ahead, I'll open the floor to any questions.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have a question. Okay, Mr. Roundtree, I probably gonna need you to flip back through the slides in order for me to ask my questions, because you were still moving quite, um, fast. You were a little hyper-verbal tonight.
No, and that's just, that's generally my, my pace, but...
I don't know, you're a little bit faster than normal. So the first slide I want you to go to is the, um... The virtual for, for third through fifth? Well, actually, stop there, 'cause that's one of the slides I had questions on too. So the family commitment, so you talked about with the virtual model, there'll be certain requirements this time around that students, let me talk into Mike, I'm sorry, I forgot people watching. There'll be certain requirements that students have to have if they want to do the virtual model, one being reliable internet and, um... Let me see, something else you mentioned on here. I do have a, and a semester-long commitment. Um, so, this time around, I know because everything was new, people were still trying to figure it out, the executive team was still trying to figure it out, so we asked for people to be patient and allow for, I hate to use the word pivoting and all of that, but flexibility. So we did have some students that switched in between back and forth, which this was new for everybody, we should have. Uh, but this time around, you're saying they must commit, so there would be no, just for clarity, there would be no switching back and forth.
Yes, ma'am, that, that is our, you know, our plan. Um, but you know, sometimes we, if we get a, a, a outpouring of, 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 of students or parents, you know, contacting us or you all asking for this, then, you know, we consider it. Our plan is to hold steady to a semester-long commitment, yes, ma'am.
So part of that is because it's a whole new, like, so there'll be virtual teachers, and then there'll be an actual virtual program director and stuff like that. So if you have students coming out of the program, you've already hired and paid for somebody, so therefore...
That's one reason, and, and also the original reason why initially, the last year, we said semester-long commitment, because it creates hardships for the schools because they're coming, you know, in and out, back and forth, and it's hard for them to get continuity, um, you know, as well, even if, for things that are as simple as record-keeping and placement. And then you're exactly right, when you talk about sack, we, we've gone through the allotment process, and so we've given them the number of students that are supposed to be in the class. Well, if, if students are going back and forth, it, it, during the semester, that kind of upsets the balance, you know, either way, whether it's to, of trying to get more in there or what's left if, if we're having to take some out. So there are several reasons why that presents challenges and why we were saying a semester-long commitment.
Okay, so can you go to that slide, thank you for those? The next slide I want you to go to is the slide that talks about the, um, virtual program, the virtual director, the virtual counselor, or the... Okay, thank you. So now my question about that one then is, on, on those teachers or that program director, they're strictly full-time virtual?
Yes, ma'am.
No part-time virtual, part-time in-person?
No, ma'am.
Just wanna make clarity for our staff.
They will have a program leader, and we, like I said, we're waffling on what we're gonna call it. When I say waffling, I mean, we haven't decided yet. Um, and then there will be, again, a registrar, administrative assistant, the school counselor that we're calling Success Coach, a dedicated, um, technology support specialist, and then teachers.
So you will look at doing the hiring or either pulling from current staff if their school building does not support the number for in-person after the kids have already picked, or after the parents have picked the models for the student?
Exactly, because all of that will be driven, of course, by, um, enrollment. Now, we're looking at one of two things. We're, we're, we're looking at trying to fit this in, um, because we still have to think about cost. Um, and so we're comparing, um, using our teachers and pulling them from the schools and, uh, or looking at using edgenuity teachers, but we, we're trying to compare the cost. The other thing that, that, that impacts that, that may prevent us from maybe using our own teachers, say for example, we, from this school, uh, from a grade level, you may pull four fourth graders from here. From this school, you may pull four. That, if you're pulling that few, if, in aggregate, it'll be a larger number. But for that particular school, it's not, and so it will, it may throw the balance off where we might can't pull a teacher because four students may not, will not be enough to impact whether we, you know, leave a teacher there or not. So it's really driven by enrollment, you know, and, and numbers as to how we're going to staff.
So then my next question is regarding staff. So if there are any teachers right now who, I mean, I, I know the teachers didn't like doing both, so let me say that, I know y'all didn't, but if there are any teachers that did like doing strictly virtual, are you guys going ahead and, uh, have a list or going ahead and asking those staff members if they want to teach in this virtual?
Well, I, let me, I may get in trouble for this, but I wanna give a shout-out to Flint Hill because Dr. Donardo has already called, because she actually have teachers who have expressed an interest to her that they would like to do solely, solely do virtual. So my email back to her now, do, do, does that mean they want to teach virtual students or do they wanna teach virtually? Because there is a difference, I had to make sure they weren't just trying to teach virtually to be offside. But no, they have an interest in teaching, um, students who enrolled in the virtual program. We've not gotten that far down the, and so I emailed her back and told her, you know, to hold that. We, when we get to that point, we'll contact her again. But right now, because we've not, we need to do a cost factor analysis to see the cost difference between using our teachers and edgenuity, we've not gotten that far. I know Dr. Mosley, um, they sent me the, um, cost for the previous year, and we don't know if, if they're holding to that, so I know for a... And we don't know if, if they're holding to that, so I know for a fact, because she copied me on the email. She has sent an email to the rep, um, asking for the upcoming school year's cost. Um, as of my meeting with them this morning at eleven-thirty, she had not received a response. So let me ask her now, have you received a response? So we're waiting on next year's cost from the vendor to, so that we can complete the cost factor analysis.
Okay, very good.
Mm-hmm.
So one last question on this slide and then I'll actually move to the next slide. My last question on this slide is about the virtual program, where actually I have two questions.
Okay.
Um, the virtual program leader?
Mm-hmm.
That person is an administrator?
Yes ma'am.
So you're looking for a current administrator in that position?
It may not be a current, we may have to hire, well, we will hire, we don't wanna disrupt, you know, what we have going now. Of course, if a current, a sitting administrator is interested in applying, well then, of course, he or she may apply, but no, we're not gonna move.
But it can be somebody for a promotion.
Eh, ma'am?
It can be somebody for a promotion, that's what I'm asking.
I, I don't know if I necessarily call it a promotion, because they're gonna be lateral. Um, this will, this particular, we don't wanna use the word principal just yet.
Okay.
Um, but, but, but the, the position is comparable to what a principal does, at best we can.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause I didn't want anybody moving and then, like, the year after that, we don't have this model, say for example, and then where do they go?
Exactly.
Um, so then my last question is success, uh, coach counselor, the success person. That counselor is for three through twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Or is it depending on the numbers?
Right now, it's three, we've written it for three through twelve.
Okay.
Obviously, um, we don't wanna overload, so if we get a thousand kids, that may be a lot for one person, you know, to handle. But again, right now, we know for sure that we have, that we, that we, we will have at least one. So those four positions that you see there above the teachers, we've already, um, um, secured the funding for that. And that's, that, that's a done deal. So we know we have at least one, and if we, if we have to add, then we, we, we will go to the superintendent and ask to add.
Okay, very good, thank you. The next question is the edgenuity slide or the slide that you have edgenuity wrote on it?
Right there, secondary, uh-huh.
Yes, okay, secondary. So, um, explain to me, 'cause I didn't understand that. The prepackaged curriculum courses offered are limited to edgenuity?
And the prepackaged curriculum is edgenuity.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, Dr. Um, Warfield, yes.
Okay, so is it utilizing edgenuity only or are they utilizing teachers? I, I guess that's where I need clarity.
Do you wanna speak to that again? Okay, uh, well, the platform is edgenuity. Now, they will have, um, the way we've envisioned it, and Dr. Warfield, you may, because you may wanna come in, talk, because this, this is part of what you did. Um, but we, they will have access to a certified teacher, but of course, again, as I said earlier, we don't know what that's gonna look like just yet, because we're, we're working to try again to see what the cost is and which one is most cost-effective.
So I guess I'm confused, 'cause before edgenuity was our self-paced model.
And this what, this is, this is completely self-paced.
So I saw that for third, third through fifth grade. So then why would you need, I guess I'm confused with the virtual staff then. So what would the teachers be doing if it's self-paced? Because I saw that they were used in a support situation.
Well, we, we say that they're supporting, again, we don't know how many kids. So right now, say for example, elementary, we, we were starting out with, with, with a core staff of four. But obviously, if we have, you know, five hundred, um, 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 three through five kids, then very well, we, that would be too many, you know, in my estimation, um, for four people to handle. But, um, so we, they will have a teaching staff, but as far as them being able to, um, we're toying with a, a, a schedule, I talked to them about that this morning. A set schedule, um, so that, you know, they could log in and have teacher support. But we have some parents who don't want that set schedule. They think self-paced, they think, well, if I can get all of my work done, Sunday night, Monday night, you know, then I'm done. And, and we have some kids who are independent enough to do that. Um, in, 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 in this model, it's difficult really to, to pinpoint specifically for kids, because we have to make the decision on the good of the whole. Um, because it is, um, because number one, it's self-paced, but then number two, we're still trying to meet the needs, you know, of the children. So we talked about, uh, whether or not we should have even put the schedule in, you know, in this packet, but we did not do that. Because we, the more we put out there, then sometimes people start holding us to it. And at this juncture, we're still considering and toying with some things.
Okay, so then may I, may I make a suggestion? Because it took a while for me to dig through that, to figure out that it, that the virtual platform really is self-paced, even though you have it on there. I think we just need to be very transparent, I don't know.
I was under the impression the same thing, that it would be a teacher would be sitting at her desk, teaching those students who were virtual.
Yeah.
I would just take away virtual and change it to self-paced.
Pace, well, and one, and you all, um, explained why, we, we've tried to get away from the verbiage of self-paced, but that, 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 that's what it's, um.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
You've got to be honest with them and let them understand this is self-paced, that you're not gonna log in and see Dr. Warfield every morning.
Absolutely.
And she's gonna teach me my math, and I'm gonna do my homework and come back, which is what they're basically doing now.
Yeah, and I'm glad you timed in, Madam Chair. I mean, like, just, um, let's look at last year's situation, and now I need to change my Facebook post, because I put virtual. And I don't want people to think that it's a, a virtual, 'cause it's really more a self-paced. Uh, but let's just think about last year, we had so many parents that we did all of those presentations, or you guys did all of those presentations, even the YouTube educational forums about the different models. And you still had parents calling you, because they did not understand the difference between the virtual and the self-paced. So for me, and I'm sorry, I talk with my hands, uh, so for me, you know, the thing that I feel like we need to be transparent with people and, and just be open and honest and say, this is a self-paced model. So a teacher will not be sitting, if you choose this, a teacher will not be sitting directly in front of your student. I think it needs to be spelled out plain as day and as much as possible, 'cause again, let's look at last year. How many times did we say that and people still did not understand?
And on that, on bullet three for the elementary, we did put self-paced.
Yeah, that's why, I saw it for elementary, but I did, I really had to dig for the secondary to figure out, 'cause I had wrote down edgenuity and that was where I got confused. But that explains too, why the STEM, Alanas, Ban and CTAE students would not qualify, which is what I said last year, when people were saying, let's just do self-paced, because you guys had already said that those students don't have edgenuity offerings available for them. So, I mean, that took that out of the equation, so.
I thank you for your feedback, we actually, um, as, um, Mr. Roundtree shared, and first of all, happy, um, school board, um, congratulation. I'm sorry, but we actually, I'm sorry, is it gonna echo? I'm good, okay. So we've actually, we have a task force that's working through this right now, and so because we're in the, we call it, we're under construction right now. We're trying to make sure that we're looking through a couple of different things. At this time, right now, we have a survey that's out to our self-paced parents to help us with the development of this program. So we should receive the results back.
Results is March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth. And so it's gonna help us with the development of this, but we have, we were looking through, do we call it self-paced or do we get, we change the language? Because we're also looking at creating a little bit more structure to it than, you know, a structured schedule to it. So we've looked at the teachers that we will have placed with the program, so they can offer support to the students, um, throughout the process. Because it's about the students mastering the standards. So we wanna make sure that they have immediate support, um, and have more of a structured, um, virtual learning experience. So that's why we started trying to move away from possibly self-paced, but we can definitely add it back. But tomorrow, we have our meeting with our leadership committee, um, members for the task force. And anything we've talked about and discussed tonight, we're gonna make sure that we address that in the morning. So thank you.
I've got one question just before you continue. Have we gotten feedback on edgenuity? I mean, is it the best thing, 'cause you're saying that we can't have the STEM program, Alanas and things like that? Was, wasn't there some issues with AP classes maybe, or something, am I?
Some of them were different or had different books?
Right, there were some issues with that, so how would edgenuity work into the AP classes?
Well, edgenuity, we do have AP classes, however, it's, they're approved by college board. So we can't go in and tweak the classes, so the modules are, they, we have to keep the modules the same way, because they're approved. So we can offer the AP classes, now we have the books associated with those classes. It was just a mix-up, mix-up in understanding, because it was new with rolling it out. But yes, we can offer the AP classes. Now, as we continue to develop this and we receive feedback, we could add to that and say, you know what? That's not what we're going to do next year, but we're not at that point to go ahead and put that out right now and say we will not offer it.
Okay, then, um, going back, uh, uh, this is my question about the semester. So they'd make a commitment for a semester, how is that, because they're not taking the exact same classes? You know, like what curriculum, wait, you would take it Newton High or Alcabe or Eastside? And they were to come back mid-semester. How does that reflect and how did that work this year?
When you say they're not taking the same classes?
Well, they're taking the classes, but it's not the same, uh, lesson as the teacher.
They may be a different teacher, may be a different form.
Right, right, thank you.
Simply self-paced, they may be in a different.
Right.
Okay, and so the instructional team here, they make sure that we have the sequence of, um, the, I guess I would say, the standards that we're working on in the schools. The sequence is the same in edgenuity, so we're able to go in and, and try to make sure that we align everything. And so we've been able to do that.
Okay. Um, sorry, Ms. Henderson Baker, you can go ahead.
Um, no, you're fine.
There's a hand, I don't know if y'all see.
Yeah, and she's, I was gonna let Ms. Henderson Baker finish, 'cause I interrupted her.
I guarantee you, I won't ask as many questions as Ms. Henderson.
Go ahead and let Mr. Johnson, uh, Mr. Johnson, I'm just trying to get it clear.
Why are you reluctant to commit to a teacher who's volunteering, and I use this term, to be go virtual? We have a head count fixed now, and we're only gonna split it two ways, virtual or your face-to-face. So why wouldn't you not take a commitment now instead of procrastinate? I don't understand why you would delay that.
Because it's driven by numbers and we've not, we don't know how many children are gonna come to the virtual program.
Okay, you don't know.
No, sir.
But at least you will have a commitment from the faculty that want to go.
To go, exactly.
And you deload it, ask who, ask first, I'm assuming.
Exactly, well, what we, and, and we're, the reason we're holding there is because we still have to make sure the school of its staff. And so we're trying not to get into a whole bunch of costs, because what happens is, we may have to move, like you said, those teachers who want to go. But if there's still a need in the building, then we're gonna have to go back then and hire, uh, uh, you know, somebody to fill that. So we're, we're, we're accruing a cost.
Hold right there, come on, you're using the word hire. To me, that means budget headcount. So is that what you're saying when you say use the word hire? Or you're gonna go back within the organization?
Mm-hmm.
And go to a different department and hire a person to do that? I need that clarity, I would assume that the board members would need that, because we're talking dollars when you say hire, that's a head count to me.
Exactly.
So, so, Ms.?
Mike's off, sorry. Um, so, Mr. Johnson, yes, we would look back into the district to see, so if there are thirty kids in a classroom and they all come into the program, then we would take that teacher with them. However, there's also opportunity for people who are not currently enrolled in our school system, so they're not in our head count right now. So there may, if thirty people who are currently in a homeschool environment enroll in our school system and want to be part of the virtual program, they're not counted. So then you may have to hire a staff member to be part of the virtual program. But for all intents and purposes, we're looking, you would look inside the district first, because if you take thirty kids out of a school, then that teacher does not need to be at that school any longer. So yes.
I, I, I understand that aspect of it.
Yeah, so that's what we'll do.
I think then, I'm trying to understand that, it's the same thought. Are, I'll let me just ask this question, are you, uh, 'cause everything I've heard does not sound like we're anticipating an enrollment bump. Right, we're not anticipating a, a great number, if anything, we've, we've talked about how the lower grades or kindergarten and whatever, there's specific grades that are lower enrollment this year. So.
But there's some, there, there's somewhere, so we're, we're anticipating they're going to come back, but they would be going into a grade above, rather than coming into pre-K and kindergarten. So we just don't know.
Sure.
You know.
Hmm, okay.
You know, we don't.
I know, I'm just, I guess I'm concerned about us not knowing, but making commitments to, to hiring people and we don't know.
We wouldn't hire anybody until we know, that's what we're trying to say.
Okay, alright.
Numbers first, then that.
Alright, 'cause it does feel like a, a straight-up headcount numbers game. If we have X amount of teachers and X amount of students, they're either going virtual or they're going to be in-person. So that didn't seem like we need to hire anybody else.
You may, you may not, but remember what Mr. Roundtree said, if, if four people come out, if four children come out of one school, four out of another, four out of another, it's not enough to reduce the staff at the base schools, because they still need those teachers to instruct the remaining students. So it really is dependent upon enrollment and where they're coming from.
Right, but I'm saying, don't, don't we have some information and data that would give us those kinda trends? That's not the trend currently, is it?
Well, we don't, well, it's a little bit different now, because we're not serving a completely virtual setting. And we've had people transitioning in and out of the virtual model all year long. As a matter of fact, we've had some since, you know, last week, transfer back into an in-person environment. So I think it's, um, you have to, you have to go through the enrollment process, the, and then from there, the staffing piece comes next. Obviously, if the students are coming from a school and the alliance share of, of them are coming from a particular school, then we would need to go in and take a teacher from that school. Not, um, not go and hire another person, unless you run into a place, a situation where you've got a third grade class and only two kids came out of one school, three out of another. But then the likelihood of that person, um, being able to generate the FTE necessary to support that class is pretty, pretty significant.
Okay.
And, and up here, I put the slide back up there, thank you, Dr. Warfield, um, that tells that, that right, even though, Ms. Johnson, we don't know the answer now, we will know it pretty quickly, because we have the window from April nineteenth to April thirtieth.
That was my point, we, we've got plenty of time.
We do.
And why couldn't you tell that, that, that volunteer, a, a definitive answer? That's what, that's what we're from the start.
Well, I, again, I didn't wanna get anybody, uh, holed up, and I didn't wanna commit to anything, so I just asked, and I just, I used Flint Hill as an example, because they, they, people there have expressed interest, and I, I told them that we will, 'cause I, I don't, at this juncture, don't wanna commit to any of their whole bunch of different things that may impact that, but if people are willing to come.
You can't get away that easy, you got to make a decision.
I, I understand that, but obviously, and, and you're right, we do want, uh, the volunteers. Um, because that means if you're volunteering, you, you, you're, you're willing to do it. But we also wanna look at the quality also of that, you know, that volunteer, because sometimes people want to do things and it may not be the best fit for them. So, um, but, but, but I hear you.
It's a different issue.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair, so my last question has to do, again, back to the teacher. So I'm confused as to what, what would the teacher be doing through the school day?
Am I the one who I confuse? No, I've just wrote something similar to that.
Yeah, so can some, because the teacher is support, but they're really utilizing edgenuity, self-paced. So is the T, so if it's self-paced, the teacher is not like sitting there with them, monitoring them, because, I mean, they could take it at any time. So what would be the role of the teacher, help me to understand it?
Can you flip, if you don't mind, if you can go to the elementary slide? Just to give you some, um, just kinda clarity about the teacher role. One, I'm probably muffled. One, um, the teachers will actually be creating the modules for our self-paced students for grades three through five. Um, I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to see what the, the self-paced model current, currently looks like for our elementary students. But we are doing a combination of edgenuity and creating modules. And so what we have found is that edgenuity, edgenuity didn't completely support our elementary program. So our curriculum specialists have been creating the modules, um, for science and social studies. And we've been using a lot of supplementary, uh, supplementary resources for the other content areas. So lessons learned going into this next school year, we want those dedicated teachers to actually work in creating modules. And in that, they're gonna have to do the grading aspect, they're gonna have to look at the, the work for the students and provide feedback. So this is an oper, this is a, a full-time job. Um, if you talk to our content specialists at this point in time, from the time they come to work to late evenings, they're creating videos that are on our Canvas page, and they're giving feedback, they're participating, they're, they're giving contact or emailing families if they have concerns, so it's definitely a full-time job. Um, the second portion of that is lessons learned, um, having someone try to do dual duty as far as being a facilitator that's in the building, that has a, a teaching role or a, a EIP teacher, then from five to seven in the evening, trying to go in and grade assignments and give feedback, has been really, um, it's been difficult for our facilitators. And in looking at some of the early data that we're getting back from our families, that's one of the areas of concern. It's because they have not had that contact from the facilitator to know how their student is performing, how do they need to progress? So, um, in building this model for next school year. So, um, in building this model for next school year, we know we need to have a certified teacher that's there to support throughout the day to be able to answer those emails, um, have office hours to be able to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that helps me a lot because before I was like, so what is the role? Okay, so then when you say that, uh, they're creating the modules and stuff like that, there was somewhere in this slide, um, the presentation where it said that the virtual students are, let me stop using virtual, let me say self. The self-paced students would have to have a report time or is said required meetings or something.
I believe it goes back to the family commitment and support where we're saying that the families would need to actually attend the parent conferences quarterly to be able to determine the progress of their students.
And those teach, they would be meeting with those teachers that were.
Yes, that, that had been assigned to those particular caseloads. So then you're, you were, we're thinking about, okay, we need to make sure that this is, um, something that's very much doable for that particular teacher.
My child has called me three times, so it must be an emergency, so I'm gonna need to be excused right quick. Thank you, Dr. Mosley.
Okay, so sort of piggybacking on what she was asking about what the teacher's role is. You said that edgenuity did not cover everything for our elementary school.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So what would the teacher's role be in middle school and high school? Cause they would not be making the modules.
Well, good evening. Um, for secondary with the teachers, they, we have the facilitators in place. So just as Dr. Mosley was saying, they will be working with the students and providing that support. While there are not as many modules, there's a lot more graded work and support there. And so for the students to get the feedback in a timely manner, they have to be there to answer those questions right there at those office hours. So that's the main portion of it. And looking at it from this past year, there is heavy on the graded work pieces. So we can't let that go. And that's been one of the things the students have really needed, that supporting that feedback from the actual teacher as opposed to, while the system can grade certain pieces, but when it's writing in projects, they need the actual live feedback from the teacher.
Okay. Um, my next question is, is there not another program out there other than edgenuity that would already have the modules created and match the Georgia standards that, um, that we, we teach?
When we had a.
You know, for grades three through twelfth.
Right. When we had the task force, um, elementary had the task force and secondary had a task force to explore various programs and they looked at about, if I'm not mistaken, it was five? They looked at five. Edgenuity has been the best. And then we've even checked with other systems and edgenuity is the best that is out there right now.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, but then again, what about creating, since our teachers are already creating modules, would it not be best for us to just create our own system? I, I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yes, you are absolutely right. But right now, today, what we're focused on is phase one. So this is year one. And then we, if you look at the task force, um, of course, we don't have that out right now, but we've done, we've have a five-year plan. And so now when you look at year two, you see, well, next year, we start trying to pull away from a prepackaged curriculum because it takes an extensive amount of time, which actually Dr. Mosley can speak to that with elementary working through that this year.
Uh, yeah, I've heard.
It takes an extensive amount of time to pull that together. And considering the number of courses that we have, that's gonna take us this year to get that.
But isn't there a course that we've already had? Um, I mean, what, what does RISE use? Cause I know.
Conexus.
Conexus. So doesn't Conexus cover elementary and high school?
So Conexus does cover some classes, but when you look at, when we had the, um, task force to look at every, um, look at the five programs, we had a chance to look at, I don't have it in front of me, but we looked at accessibility, we looked at technology, we looked at if it was aligned to the standards, user-friendly, things like that. And so when we looked, I remember Conexus was one. At that point, Conexus had not shifted to, um, it wasn't, they weren't prepared for this virtual space. They didn't offer as many courses that we had. They also, um, there were certain, um, devices that it would work on and that, those were not the devices at this time that we, we didn't, I think it was Chromebook.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't load on the Chromebook, so he couldn't use it.
And so we were trying to make sure, we looked at everything
Okay.
um, just to ensure we get the best product. And as Ms. Neely shared, we started talking to other systems across the state, um, and just trying to learn a little bit more. And at that time, and at this time still, it's, it is the best and it, you know, to meet our needs. Um, however, as I shared, we're phasing, we have a phasing plan, so we plan to phase out. Edgenuity.
Um, another question about the, um, using the self-paced. Um, I know, um, you said that we wouldn't be able to do, um, participate in Alanus, STEM programs, things like that. Um, I know this is gonna be a question that I get. What does that have to do with extracurriculars? Will they, if they are self-paced in this program, will they be able to participate in marching band? Because marching band, I think you're required to take a band class at the school.
So they can participate in extracurricular activities. We've not, we're not taking that away. However, when you're talking about STEM, there's some courses that STEM, that they're not in the edgenuity platform.
Right.
So we wanna ensure that they also get the full STEM experience and the whole, you know, that's the point of the STEM program. So we want it to be upfront, as you all shared, and just share that in advance. If you're going to do that, you won't have the full, um, experience because all of the courses are not offered in that platform.
Extracurricular activities they can participate in. It's just there's certain ones that they may not be able to participate in.
Our special programming.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think that is all I had. Um, you've mentioned a reliable internet must be provided by the family. So we're not providing any hotspots and anything like that. And, um, and the te, the learning coach, I'm assuming you are referring to is the parent would be that learning coach.
Well, it would serve as a coach as well, but we're calling, secondary, that was a secondary term. They were calling their teachers, um, learning coaches, I think that, yeah. And, um, but, but we want parents to serve in that role as well, exactly. Yeah.
I think that's all I've got for right now.
I have a question. You know, when you said that, you know, once they, the parents decide to stay, go virtual
Mm-hmm.
or in person, is there a plan for any hardship i- in case something happened, uh, without forbid, nothing happen?
Mm-hmm.
But a kid has to make a drastic change. Could that kid change before that semester's over with?
We're, we're saying no. We're saying no.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
But of course, you know.
You have to leave a leeway just in case.
Exactly, but, but we, but we are compassionate and, 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 you know, those kinds of things you would have to look at on a case-by-case basis, Mr. Bailey. Um, but generally, they would have to commit for the semester. But if it is something, you know, catastrophic where it would necessitate a switch either way, then of course, you know, that we would consider that. But those should be few and far between. Um, you know.
Cause you know, just in case you get a transfer and you got, you got a plan for that, I know as well, because some will come in as well. I tried that, I don't like that, and I wanted to swap over. But you got the, you know, I know you put it in place, but it can't change. So that will be given to them day one.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
But would you allow for people say, I know you've got a due date, we'll, you know, notify people? But say you have somebody that moves in, in the middle of the summer. Would they have an option or would they have to go in person until?
Now, with transfers or with people that come in later, we treat them like this is their very first time here and so then they get that option.
Okay.
How much time would they have?
Uh, we've not gotten that far down, but we give them, we, we, when they go to register, um, you know, the, the registrar or somebody at the school, you know, would tell them, would give them the option. Um, I, I would think that, you know, they would go ahead and, um, you know, make the decision. But if they need time, as long as, I, I'll put it like this. As long as they've not submitted their final registration pieces and packet, they're technically not ours yet. So I, I would just say, well, you know, turn the paperwork in when you, when you've made your decision.
Um, I've got one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The advisement part of it, you, um, you mentioned that the students would be, have to go through advisement to make sure that they understand that what this self-paced model means. That you may be, not be able to do certain classes and, or participate in certain things. Will that be done in person prior to them turning in their application for this?
Yes, I would hope that, and now, because we're not making it a requirement, um, right now, that's not what our thinking is. Um, so those people who, you know, take advantage of that, and that's, of course, I'll let you come and talk. What's that, what you're gonna say?
I was going to add orientation during the orientation.
Yeah, exactly.
We will address that in that, um, in the last slide.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, when we have the orientation onboard, that's out until July.
Um.
Cause that's what worries me, if they're not advised.
Yeah, but exactly. We're trying, yeah, during this window, um, and I'm saying this and hopefully, you know, parents are listening and then we'll continue to say this in her weekly update, that if you're considering this, you know, in this window between April nineteenth and April thirtieth, reach out to your school, you know, and talk to them. We're, we're toying with, and, and again, we didn't put a whole bunch of stuff on here because it's, it's, it's one thing to say it and have to take it back. We'd rather build on it. But we're toying with having principals to have, if not the final say-so, some say-so in, you know, in it. But the gray area that we're trying to work through is what if a parent says, no, you're giving me this option and I wanna exercise, I don't care what you say. And so we're trying to find out how, how would we work through issues like that. But if you're listening, parents, I do encourage you to please talk with staff at the school, your school counselor in particular, who, who is charged with knowing students' academic backgrounds and how they perform, cause they have the records, you know, right there. Talk with them to, to make sure that, uh, the self-paced, um, program is a good fit for your child.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I know when the kids register for their classes every semester, or every year, they have to have a sign, sort of signed off by their teachers or their counselor. Wouldn't this be the same sort of thing? If you want to take the self-paid program, you need to be signed, it needs to be signed off by your counselor or your previous teachers or something.
Yeah, we've not fleshed that completely out yet. Um, but that, that is what we're leaning, based on feedback, um, even just from the, I met with the, three of the middle school principals a few weeks ago about, about this very thing. And, and that's where, and they were, they were saying the same thing that you're saying. Um, but we're just trying to, um, make sure that we're not trampling on anybody's rights, um, as related to that.
No, and I would just say that they need to sign off.
Sign off, exactly.
A parent can go and say, no, you're, you're right, I want my child to do this. I don't care what their teachers say, that's one thing. But I think it would be helpful if they are, they are signed off on it by their counselors or their former teachers.
Okay, we got it. Thank you, we got it.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yes, yeah.
I'm done.
Madam Chair, I just got one more thing.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did have an emergency, so I really needed to step out. Um, but, um, but she's fine. Uh, but I did want to reiterate what I said about the language needs to change to self-paced.
Say that, yeah.
Yes, please.
It's on the elementary, we've, we already, um, we already have it down, we're gonna put it on, on the secondary.
Okay.
Do we have that?
I got it, yes, indeed. I'm taking good notes.
I have a few questions, Madam Chair. First of all, just thank you guys for all the, I mean, you've obviously, obviously put a lot of thought and energy and research into this, so thank you for all that work. I know it's a ton. And then here, here you are for us to grill you, so thank you for enduring that as well. Couple of quick questions, though. It does sound like in the virtual or self-paced model, some, some students really aren't gonna, you know, qualify. That's not, maybe not the right word, but there are a lot of criteria that they need to kind of meet in order to be a part of that. And then they still, some students still won't be served, you know, pre-K through second grade, S- STEM, uh, Alanus. What, what is it, how about special needs students? Are they gonna even be able to be, participate?
Ms. Ramsey and I conversed, it was either Thursday or Friday, I can't remember. Uh, she and I met about some others, and this is one of them. Um, and we, I talked with her about, um, what the options are. And, and what she was seeking was, you know, some clarity. Once she knows finite that it's this or that, that helps her team. But a lot of their choices, um, we're encouraging them to meet with their IEP team about, um, the, them specifically. Um, because they, that, that needs to be, I feel, a team decision based on the needs of the, you know, of the child. Cause obviously, this will present some challenges for students, you know, who have an exceptional, um, and exceptionality. Um, but we, we of course can't, you know, shut the door on them. But again, it's all about, you know, choices and options, you know, that the parents take. But we do hope that they will, um, consult with the IEP team, um, in, you know, before making a final decision. And so we, we've been in conversation about what that will look like for special ed students.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, personally, I love the, the op, the choice that, that some students will have. It doesn't sound like it's gonna be a choice for everyone. Um, and I just want us to, to make sure we're also clear about that, that it may not be an equitable solution for everyone, but in this case, maybe that's okay. Um, I, I don't know, but I would, I would love for us to have some conversation about that. We, you know, we've, I just, I just think that would be important for us to say, we know this is not gonna serve everyone and we're sorry. Like maybe just say, hey, we, we can't, we, we're gonna do our very best. Um, but there may be a situation where we can't meet that need. Uh, and us be honest about it. I think that's where I want us to be, is just be honest about, this is self-paced. This is not gonna work for everybody and somebody's gonna get left out. But it doesn't mean we're not trying, doesn't mean we're not trying to, to, to create a situation for all students. This one just might not work. Um, anyway, there's a little platform, sorry about that. Uh, so similar, it sounds like it's similar to Cyber Academy I've seen in, in the past. Uh, you know, some of our teachers have gone and taught at the Cyber Academy. Does this mean that our virtual class sizes, that the teachers who, who we will put in the virtual classroom or whatever, uh, that their span of care in a sense could be larger? They, they don't necessarily have to just have twenty kids now. We could, they could potentially service and teach a hundred kids.
Well, we're still waiting on guidance. I'm looking at Ms. Fury because sometimes she gets stuff that, that we, before we get it, uh, you know, from the State Department as it relates to classes. Now, we waived, you know, um, classes, but we, we stay within our, our waiver, you know, it's a, a plus five, um, uh, uh, for, in, plus five and a plus seven. So right now, we're trying to stay, you know, within that. But if they give us some grace, depending on how this, how it looks like, again, it all goes back to numbers, uh, we, we just don't have an answer yet because we're trying to wait to see even how they're gonna, if, how much FTE we would even get for a virtual student because we still have to be able to pay for, you know, that teacher. So there's still some moving parts that are out of our control right now for that. Um, because we really don't decide some of that. I mean, we, we, we do, but we wanna see what parameters they're gonna put around us as it relates to that.
Right, and I, I think that's again where I'm talking about an issue of equity. And maybe I don't, I'm not, I don't know enough to, to comment on it well. But if a, if a in-person classroom teacher has X amount of students and X amount of hours a day, and then if we're gonna have that be the exact same amount that an online teacher would have who doesn't have to teach in person, who's on, who's putting together the modules, which I understand is, is complicated. I'm not minimizing that task. But I don't think that, it doesn't sound like apples to apples to a current classroom teacher to what you're presenting as, uh, whether it's, uh, secondary or, uh.
Well, one thing I will say is we're still working on the model.
Okay.
Um, it is my, um, expectation, we didn't put this in here because again, we, we, we don't know what it's going to look like. But it is my expectation that there will be some type of, you know, beyond instructional support. But ins, because instructional support can be pure instruction. I mean, you, I may be struggling, but if, if, if the teacher needs to take me back through the standard, then that's teaching. So, you know, it's, it's just gonna look differently, but it's still all teaching. And we're still tweaking that.
And yes, indeed, is what Mr. Roundtree has expressed. But yes, you, you could have more students served in a virtual environment than you would in an in-person environment for a host of reasons. But we have, um, we, the state has waived the, the number of students in, in classes right now in terms of the above. And we have a waiver that we, we have put in our strategic waiver. So we'll still be working within the structure of that, but potentially you could do that, yes.
Okay.
Some systems actually do that now. They have, instead of, you know, the in-person classes might have twenty-six kids and the virtual classes have thirty-six kids.
Right.
So it's possible, but I, I just, we're, we're trying to stay slow and steady to win, win the race and make sure we've got all the I's and T's dotted and crossed.
Okay. Okay. Good, well, thank you. I have, the last thing is maybe just, I don't know. Um, you know, we, we, if, if Rise Academy is using an antiquated, uh, platform for education, can we not move them to, move that whole system to Edgenuity as well and, and dump Canexus if that's a, like, it sounded like when we got to that question a minute ago, well, you know, that didn't fit, doesn't work on this device, and then, then can we not, can we stop paying for that? It sounded like an expense that maybe is not necessary if we have a product that's better. And I would certainly hate for the Rise students to get something that's...
I don't, I don't think that it's, I mean, I've, I've actually been the end user of Canexus with my child, so, um, the, I don't think the Canexus product is in, inferior. I think that connecting it with the devices that we had at the time, they, they, they just couldn't make it happen.
Right.
My, my estimation, and, and Dr. Thomas is here, so she can talk to Rise Academy probably better than all of us, but I had a conversation with Ms. Coming and, um, Ms. Perryman about Canexus. And they feel very comfortable using and in the way that they use it at Rise. So, I don't know, Dr. Thomas, if, if you've got some different information?
My primary question is just, is it necessary, or is it a necessary expense? I'm not gonna argue whether it's better and all that. Is, just is it a necessary expense right now when we've added more platforms? We've got Edgenuity, we got Canvas. If we keep adding these programs, at some point, isn't one of them the one you wanna kind of...
You would still have to add those same, then you would add them just to Edgenuity. You would still have to pay for the new licenses, and so they're very comfortable with what, so it's six of one, half a dozen of another, they're just electing to use another model. But then those licenses that they purchased then would tran, would transfer to Edgenuity, and you would still pay for them there as well, so...
That's what, yeah, that's what Dr. Warfield and I was talking. Um, they opted, and we allowed them to just continue because they, um, did not want to change. And we were at a juncture where it was just, just a turbulent time. And so we were trying to make people comfortable as well. And because they expressed an interest in keeping that particular platform, we said, okay, you all just go, so that's why we didn't bring them on.
Thank you.
That brings up a question, if you don't mind me stepping in. Well, wouldn't it be, make more sense just to have them all on the same program, the same platform?
Well, that's what we were thinking when we wanted to move them to, uh, you know, to Edgenuity, but again, they wanted to stay.
Um, the best for that situation? If those students choose to be in-person at Rise, um, you know, is that the best platform for, for them to...
I understand what you're asking.
And, you know, is Edgenuity? I don't know the right word to say it, but is it, is it, I know what I'm trying to say, but I don't want to...
...connected program for the students that attend Rise.
Right.
Right.
Rise Academy. One thing that I want to say on behalf of Ms. Coming, who is the director of the program, since she's not here, I don't want to speak or misspeak on her behalf. So, if you would allow us the opportunity just to go back and talk to her and her team to see specifically what are the benefits of the Canexus program? Why do they want to keep it? Um, pros and cons against having Canexus as well as Edgenuity? Because I know there were some things that, you know, that they felt strongly about with Canexus versus Edgenuity. And today, I'm not able to, you know, speak directly to those points. And I don't want to misrepresent, you know, Rise and their faculty's thoughts as it relates to Canexus. So, if you don't mind, we can certainly go back and explore that option of, um, seeing if both programs can be merged and is not what are the pros and cons of doing such.
Yeah.
That would be lovely.
And maybe...
Since she's not here, I, I don't want, I don't even want to speak on her behalf.
It, it may be some commendation too, uh, Ms. Coming for, uh, leading the virtual charge before any of the rest of us.
That's what I was gonna say. It's been in place for a long time, so it's, you know, would not maybe make, make as much sense in a place where it's up, running, and working well to then suddenly shift.
And also, we shared that, you know, we had a chance to cross-examine several programs. One of the things that we, and it just came to me while I was standing here, when you were talking, um, when we were talking about cost-effectiveness as well. To implement Canexus at Rise, it's cost-effective. To implement Canexus with the virtual program with the number of students that we have, we're paying per license. Per stu, so it's, the, the number, it was an astronomical number, um, as, as far as the, the, the overarching, the cost in aggregate. But that was just, that wasn't the only reason why. It was just, that's one of the things, if you, um, look through our, you know, our analysis of the programs, you'll see where we've indicated that.
Madam Chair, I have one last thing. On the programs, I know you guys had STEM, CTAE, um, Alanus, BAN. I didn't see ROTC up there, but I would think that would be one of them as well.
Exactly.
So, can y'all put that?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know that was one from last year.
They mixed.
So, I wanna make sure y'all put that because I know it was a couple of ROTC parents who initially enrolled in the self-paced, not knowing during that summer when you guys said, like, I know for Alanus, they told us automatically, you cannot do self-paced. And so I don't think all programs said to their students, that's not an option. So, if you guys want to add that in there to make sure they know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, there any other questions on the board here? If not, then, um, we will go back to our...
May I just take a moment of personal privilege, Madam Chair? Uh, because I'm up here, you know, talking and all of that, but I, I would be remiss if I did not recognize the efforts of Dr. Penny Mosley, Dr. Nikita Warfield, and Ms. Shanti Nelly for, um, their work in leading, uh, these efforts across the, the great span, um, along with the other people who are supporting them, their individual staff, as well as the people from, throughout the district. Um, and I, I just, I just believe in, uh, giving people, um, their, um, kudos for the work that they do. And I just want them to know personally how appreciative I am, um, for, to them for doing a lot of the heavy lifting, um, you know, with all of this. And so, a lot of what you've seen today has been the collective efforts and individual efforts of the three of them and the people who, um, worked with them. And so thank you all very much for allowing us the opportunity to present this evening.
And thank you for, as Mr. Bailey said, letting us grill y'all tonight. Appreciate it.
We'll be off on the next meeting.
Well, you, you are all greatly appreciated, and so, all right. So, moving back, um, for superintendent's reports, A, B, and C. Um, do we have a motion to take all three together to vote, to approve all three, A, B, and C?
So move.
Ms. Henderson Baker, second, by Mr. Trey Bailey. All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to old business. We will take a vote on item A under old business.
Yes, ma'am, and item A, that was originally presented in February. There's been no changes since we last met, and that is ready for board action this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve item A under old business?
So move.
Ms. Henderson Baker made the motion, do we have a second? Mr. Johnson is second, all in favor, aye? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry for discussion.
I just wanna make sure, I think last week, did we not change some of these, the dates? Did they come off of old business?
Uh, there were, there were two that were originally presented that I indicated, um, at the work session that were removed, item, um, policy EEE and GAE.
Okay, so they're not...
So, they're not included in this recommendation.
And no longer in old business, so they're not, they'll be re-presented newly?
In April.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It passes, and we move on to new business, item A.
Madam Chair, new business items A through E are unchanged and, and ready for board action this evening.
Do we have a motion, um, for items A through E? Would anyone be opposed to taking all of them together?
I have an exception.
Okay.
And D.
All right. Let's look at items A, B, and C.
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, and C as a slate.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Bailey and Ms. Henderson Baker with a second. All right, all in favor of, um, approving items A, B, and C? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, item D. Mr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am, and item D is, is also unchanged and ready for board action, unless there are questions, Madam Chair.
So, do we have a motion for item D?
So move.
All right.
Second.
The motion is made by Ms. Henderson Baker, second by Mr. Trey Bailey. Is there any discussion on item D?
I, I, I'm just, I thought you were voting, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Jumped too quickly.
Okay, so...
Go ahead.
All right, so is there any, um, discussion for item D? Do you have any questions?
I just don't see the need to approve it.
Okay.
I'll say that in the yes and no vote.
Okay. All right. Well, then, all in favor of approving item D? Do you say aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries.
And, and...
Excuse me, do we have any nays?
Yes, aye.
All right, one nay. All right, thank you. Item E.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, item E is unchanged, relates to surplus property, and is ready for board action.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve item E?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Henderson Baker with a motion, Mr. Trey Bailey, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And item F?
An item F, the superintendent recommends, uh, property items discussed in executive session be approved. And those item, there are two items. The first deals with the, uh, Newton County Board of Commissioner, which is to purchase property located near the intersection of Brown Bridge Road and Ram Drive. Uh, this is property needed for the replacement of a nearby bridge on, on, on that road. Uh, the purchase includes point-two-five acres of property for right-of-way and a permanent maintenance easement for point-seven-eight acres of property. Uh, the Newton County Board of Commissioners has agreed to pay a total amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars for the acquisition of this property and right-of-way easements. And the second item is, uh, deals with requesting the approval of temporary construction easement uh, from Central Church of Christ. The temporary easement is for point-zero-two-six acres located at one-sixty Highway one forty-two. The easement is needed for road improvements at the Highway one forty-two entrance uh, to the replacement Eastside High School facilities. And that is item G, oh, excuse me, item F, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for item F?
So move.
Uh, do we have a second? Second, all right. Motion to approve was made by Ms. Henderson Baker, and the second was by the concern Anderson Bailey. Do we have discussion?
Yes, you're talking two items, okay? And I have an exception, second item.
All right, and that was the Central Church?
It's two different items. And I'm taking one vote, and I'm opposing that. So, there should be two motions.
All right.
The first and the second.
Okay. So, I'm going to refer to my vice chair in my rapid rule of order. Um, do we...
See that?
Hang on.
I think you meant the former, Madam Chair.
Class chair, excuse me, class chair.
So, what you would need to do is, um, Madam Chair, is allow, um, you, so there is a motion on the floor. So, you need to take a vote on that. However, we all heard the request of Mr. Johnson. So, it'd be up to us to decide if we let the motion fail. And then if the motion fails, then a new motion would need to be presented. Um, so Dr. Barr would need to, um...
Make another motion.
The motion never was established.
No, it was because you gotta have the motion in order to have discussion. So, that's why she asked for, so whenever you want to discuss, you gotta move it forward first. So, that's why I did so move in second, so then the floor opens up. So, but we need to break it up, so you have to add it as another agenda item if you want to break it up. So, ooh, this is gonna be complicated. So, um, mm, unless you do it as a F-one, F-two.
Or just H, H and I.
We can do it as a F-A, F-B, or F-one, F-two.
Be similar to personnel action at that point. You would just, um, vote on them separately, I believe. F-one, F-two, that'd be great.
Okay.
So, Dr. Barr would either do it as a F-one or F-two, um, separately. But again, because there's a motion on the floor, you need to take a vote. And if the motion fails, then we can, um, Dr. Barr can present it the way that Mr. Johnson wants it, and then we need new move forward.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to per, excuse me, excuse me, to approve item F? Um, all in favor? Aye? Nays?
Aye.
Aye, for you.
All right, the motion fails. All right, so now...
Madam Chair, in item F-one, um, Newton County Board of Commissioners wishes to purchase property located at the intersection of Brown Bridge Road and Ram Drive for approximately, uh, for the total amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred, twenty dollars. And that is item F-one.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve item F-one?
So move.
Ms. Henderson Baker? Second, Mr. Johnson, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, all right, Barr?
And F-two, item F-two, uh, is recommended, the, the approval of a temporary construction easement from Central Church of Christ is recommended. Total amount of, uh, to be paid for the easement is one hundred, sixty dollars. That is item F-two.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor for item F-two?
So move.
Ms. Henderson Baker? Do we have a second to approve item F-two?
Second.
Second, Mr. Trey Bailey? Right, any discussion?
Yes. I just, uh, comment. I just would like everyone to know, since this, uh, school is being built near the church that a pastor, or one of the pastors of, this is not my church. I just wanted everyone to know that. I have been accused of people thinking that's, we are somehow profiting by Eastside being built, and that's not my church right there, so the church in mention is not East Ridge Church.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right, um, so all in favor of item F-two?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, and F-two passes, let's move on to item G.
And item G, and only G, the superintendent recommends the approval of Personnel Matters as discussed in executive session, that is item G.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have a motion to approve item G?
So move.
So, uh, second.
All right, Mr. Trey Bailey and Ms. Henderson Baker?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself for nine-twenty-four.
Any others need to recuse themselves? I need to recuse myself for five-eighty-five.
I'm twelve-oh-five.
Two-oh-five?
Twelve.
Twelve-oh-five, okay.
And I need to recuse myself from two-six-eight.
All right, and just for the people who are watching, this is for personnel, um, and these are people that are immediate family that we cannot, um, vote for that particular person. So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other matters of interest?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, while we did not have student recognition this evening, I do want to take a moment to publicly announce that this week is Georgia School Board's Appreciation Week. I would like to take this opportunity to thank and honor our Board of Education members for their hard work, dedication, and vision. It's not often that we acknowledge the countless hours the members of our board dedicate to ensuring this school system is on the path to success. So, people see you here at board meeting nights, but that is just the front-facing effort of your work, the, the things that you do behind the scenes and taking calls and attending functions. Lots of people don't get to see that. We thank you for your continued support, um, the support you show not only our students, but also our school system team. So, tonight, as we have assembled to conduct the business of our school system, I want to recognize you for all that you do, both in the public and behind the scenes, to ensure our community, the children in our community experience a high-quality education. Thank you, Mrs. Coggan, Mr. Bailey, Trey Bailey, Mr. Anderson Bailey, Mrs. Henderson Baker, and Mr. Johnson for all you do for the Newton County School System and our community. Please accept the flowers and chocolate on behalf of all the employees in our school system. In addition to the flowers and chocolates, several of our schools have also provided gifts to celebrate this occasion. And before you leave, please take a moment to read the posters, which I've seen you all do that since you got here earlier this evening, um, created by our schools in celebration of Georgia School Board's Appreciation Week. We are extremely thankful for everything you do for our students and staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think I can speak for the board members and say, you make our jobs, um, easy, um, in most cases, so...
Not in all cases.
I was about to say, wait a minute.
In some cases, it's a little bit harder. Just have to throw it in there a little bit.
Wait a minute, let's go back to twenty-twenty, the whole twenty-twenty.
But no, seriously, thank you all, thank you for these great, um, gifts and the appreciation. And, um, we definitely could not do it without all of y'all and the teachers and the staff, um, out there. So, Mr. Johnson, I saw your hand.
Yes, I got a couple of items that I want to put back on the agenda. One of them is, uh, some time ago, we requested that, uh, a sign be placed on Brown Bridge Road for the Career Academy. Where is that? And when can we get it done? Can we have a status on that next meeting?
Sure, Mr. Johnson.
And the second one is, in 2008, we requested and started a fee to play in athletics in the school system. And we've had that in since '08. And I'm just wondering why is it necessary to continue that fee for our students? Or the board should consider eliminating that fee, if not the superintendent?
Sure, I'll give you an update on that as well.
Madam Chair, I have something. I just wanna, I know you already thank people, but I really do always enjoy this time, reading the notes for the kids. I know we don't have as many notes, because we don't have, like, a lot of students in person. I mean, we have a lot of students in person, but not everybody is in person, to be able to do that during class time. But I do always enjoy reading those, I do wanna thank people for that, especially to emails. A couple of people actually sent emails as well, so I greatly appreciate that. I know this was the sentiment across the state, school board members weren't in favor in 2020, superintendents too, but, you know, but we do what we do to serve, keep people safe, and try to, you know, make sure our students are set up for the 21st century and achieve educational excellence at all times. So, I do wanna thank everybody for the gifts. Also, I wanna thank, although I couldn't indulge in everything, the, Dr. Barr, they're laughing, but I wanna thank Mr. Lindsay and Chef Baker and the S&amp;P staff for the taste. Thanks to Mr. Johnson's mention.
You're welcome.
Last week, let me give Mr. Johnson his credit. So, thanks to those things, so thank you guys so much.
I agree, thank you for that. All right, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Ms. Henderson Baker, Mr. Anderson Bailey is the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.